Alright, it's called council meeting to order. We'll start with our pledge.
My Lord, you lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Um, we'll start with approval of minutes. We have the July 22nd, 2018 City Council Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Motion's been made by Jackie to approve the July 22nd, 2018 City Council Meeting Minutes. Seconded by, I'll second. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. We also have the July 29th, 2018 City Council Workshop Minutes to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Lynn to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jackie. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Additions to the agenda. Bob, we have a donation of $500 for the Fire Relief Association to the disaster. Disaster fund. Why don't we put that down underneath City Council Meeting Rules?
Then another donation from the relief that we didn't ask for in the commission call for the road.
Yeah, we'll put that right after that.
From the fire relief.
That's also from the fire relief. Linda, you had to...
Take off.
Take off the treasurer's report. And, I would like to add also, and we can add this down at the bottom of all of those. We're going to have some 2019 annual designations and appointments to committee changes due to the fact that our given city administrator. So, with those changes, any other changes? With those changes being said, I would go over to a motion to...
I'd motion to accept the agenda with the changes.
Motion made by Jackie to accept the agenda with those changes. Also seconded by Kyle. All in favor, please indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. We have a couple of issues with the Board of Appeals met and variance requests and also building permits, but since the planning and zoning board is still meeting at this time, we'll move on with the next item on the list. We'll move to the developers agreement with Al Hoheizel. We talked about that a little bit at our workshop. Al had initially wanted to be able to extend his permit before he had to start building out a couple of years. I see now the agreement does have the proper dates that we had requested. Bob, can we assume he was in agreement with those?
Yes.
And that was simply that we wanted him to start maybe by October 1st of 2020?
The 19th starts 19.
And finish by December 33rd or near completion, by December 33rd of 2020. Any questions on his developer agreement?
I'd look for a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the developers agreement for Hoheizel's road construction.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is there any, uh... Is there a maximum minimum on those buildings or as long as they fit there, it's okay? I guess mainly my question would be minimum side of a building.
Page 1, letter D.
Yeah, so he says he's 24 to 3200. So I think that's what he's choosing to build. There's no minimum, I'm assuming, on these?
I'm not sure. For a different monitor this way.
Just curious, in general, if anybody, you know how, if someone could come in and put up an 800 square foot building here?
Right.
Would we say, "Okay, sounds good, there you go"? Or, would we, would we require that it's big enough to make it usable? Use that lot to the best of its ability?
Otherwise, the minimum building sizes...
I think there are. Yeah, I think there are.
Building code.
Okay.
I don't know if they are, but, yeah, I'm pretty sure they're sold to four feet.
And I suppose it depends upon what they're using it for.
So I'm assuming this is a shop slash office or maybe an office?
We don't have a building permit for it yet.
Okay.
But this would just be a development agreement to begin the process of purchasing them.
So do we still approve the building permit or the building that's gonna put on that?
Yes.
Later just starts to...
Yes. Yep. Motion was made by Jackie to enter into the developer agreement with Al Hoheizel. Seconded by?
I'll second.
Seconded by Lynn. All in favor, please indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Collection Bureau of Little Falls. Bob, I read through that. Did that just say blanket agreement with them? You don't have a specific thing we have them working on collecting for right now? That's just a blanket agreement with that moving forward?
It's a blanket agreement, generally it's gonna be used for utility collections.
Yes. Which I think is good to have.
Yeah, and I've known what you've used these guys before.
Yes, we have.
Just on data.
Yes, my only question is a contact. I think it should be Bob as city administrator versus Kerry as the city clerk.
Yeah. And, yes, it should. That probably got started.
Right, during that interim, but I'm just, if we're gonna sign this, I guess I would cross that out and I would make it Bob and change it to his email.
Yep. Good point. So, I would look for a motion for somebody to approve that.
I would make the motion to go ahead and agree to the Collection Bureau Collection Agreement with the change of contact person being Bob.
Motion made in second to enter into the agreement with Collection Bureau of Little Falls with the change of Bob being the contact person rather than Kerry. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is our City Council Meeting Rules. And I'm trying to get to that. If anyone's got them in front of them, they were...
City of Peers Council Meeting Rules will be to address the council. Raise your hand, be recognized by the mayor, stand to speak, state your name and address. You have five minutes to state your concern and you may only speak twice on one issue.
And these are the general guidelines we talked about in our planning meeting. Have some type of guidelines that don't allow council meetings to get out of order with multiple people trying to speak at the same time. So these would be council rules that would be adopted, so. I would entertain a motion to accept those.
I'd make a motion to accept the City of Peers Council Meeting Rules.
Motion made by Jackie.
I'll second.
And seconded by Kyle to approve the City Council Meeting Rules. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us down to the $500 donation to... From the Fire Relief to...
Disaster relief fund.
Kerry goes work on, he's ready. We just have to have a motion to accept that.
I'll accept the donation of $500.
Motion made by Kyle to accept the donation of $500 for Peers Fire Relief. Seconded by Lynn. All in favor indicate by stating aye. Opposed? The second one was a donation for $500. He made to the City Council, they would like us to forward that on to the Rocket Roll event that happens the first Thursday of each month from June through September.
I would make a motion to approve the $500 donation to Rocket Roll.
Motion made by Kyle and seconded by?
I'll second.
Jackie to accept the $500 donation from Peers Fire Relief Fund geared toward the Rocket Roll event. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Annual designations and appointments with Nicole, who no longer with us. I've gone through our current designations and we're changing a few. I'll just try to run through them and the changes that I'm recommending. First of all, our data privacy officer was Nicole, I'm recommending it be Bob. On our Civil Defense Emergency Management Directors, Nicole was on there, Bob was not. I'm recommending that we add Bob. On our Public Works Committee, Nicole was on there, Bob is already on there. I'm recommending that we just drop Nicole from there. And, and Bob is already on there. We only have three people on there going forward. The Electric Committee, same thing. Bob is already on there, Kerry's already on there. I'm just recommending that we drop Nicole from that. Employee Advisory Administration Committee, Administrative Committee, it's Dave, myself, Kyle, Linda, and it was Nicole, I'm recommending we add Bob instead of Nicole. Solid Waste Committee, again, Bob was originally on there, already on there. I recommend we drop Nicole off of there. And that would be Kyle, Jackie, and Bob then left on there. Finance Committee, Nicole was on there, I'm recommending that we add Bob instead of Nicole. Cable Access Committee, Nicole was on there and Kerry is on there. So I'm just recommending that we drop Nicole and we don't have to put Bob on there. We'll let Kerry run with that. She's gonna run on that. One less thing you have to worry about, Bob. Development Regulations and Safety Committees, it's Jackie and Lynn and the department heads and Nicole, I'm suggesting we put Bob on there instead of Nicole. Tobacco Hearing Board, again, Bob replacing Nicole. Comprehensive Plan Board, Bob was originally on there, so I'm suggesting just drop Nicole from there. And then the final one is the Economic Development Authority Board. Nicole was on there and I'm recommending that we replace Nicole with Bob. Any questions on any of those? Basically, it's replacing Bob with Nicole and in some instances with Nicole and Bob were both out there, it's just we dropped Nicole. If not, I would certainly look for a motion to approve those appointments.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointments.
I'll second.
Motion made by Kyle, seconded by Lynn to approve the designation appointment changes. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Kerry, you have a question? Okay. Chris, do you have anything?
Wanted. So with Bob taking the city administrator job, he's on as the Secretary of the Fire Department. He'll post that two weeks, one applicant, Scott Sayer. Remember, he did very well. Very capable of taking care of the... My recommendation, the mayor of Scott Sayer is the Secretary of the Fire Department.
Okay. Motion on that?
I'd make a motion to appoint Scott as the Secretary of the Fire Department.
Motion made by Kyle and seconded by Jackie to approve Scott Sayer as the Secretary of the Fire Department. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'd also like to thank Bob for the job he's been there four years and put in. He's very intelligent, he's a... And moving forward, Scott had just taken the Assistant Secretary position, so I've got that posted now.
Okay. I get that, that was my question.
I was just gonna say.
Now, do you have something in mind there or you're just pulling it in?
There's, yeah, we've got posted now and there's, uh, you guys have been talking about that, so you're gonna have to...
Sure. Alright, good job.
Okay.
Thanks. Eric.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Eric.
I attached my three reports, you all are first door activity from June to date, date August 12th. 214 calls to the Peers Police Department. All typical calls, nothing, a lot of place for the Peers Police Department. Last week, I spent two days in the Peers Villa, teaching the active shooter awareness class to all their employees, it was two different sections. It actually was a very big hit, opened up a lot of eyes for a lot of employees. The old squad car did sell more than I, more than I thought to family on aisle for, I believe, $7,300 bucks. So that's gone, insurance is removed, it's out of our, our place now. Be looking for me with my, my police commission board reference to, uh, we're taking numerous complaints each week on golf court, on golf carts throughout the city streets. Nothing to do with people that are actually got golf clubs in the back, but there's numerous droves right now that are driving hollow or exploded. I just wanna see what we need to recommend and the comments we need for. We have to move forward with the ordinance like most other communities. I hope that we don't gotta do that because it's another permit, it's another, gotta be 16 million people. If the kids are driving down to the golf course, I think that's absolutely awesome because they're doing something constructive such as somehow, I need to see how you guys recommend that we can try and fix this problem. It's a big concern at home.
Mostly with young, it's all you go. You have driving. Two cars.
It's usually loaded with four or five, one sitting on the front, few sitting just... So I tagged up a letter, we'll get to the police commission board here sometime next week just for your review. I thought about sending that out on social media, just mention conversation to the parents, but it's something we probably should address before we get on shot down.
One, one actually. I was kinda thinking the same thing, Eric, I've been noticing that. I just think back my head that that's probably something.
Because on state statute or especially, that's only able, it can't be on any city street without a permit from, from the city.
Perfect.
I think that is, yeah, 16 years old, a lot of them do. If you're going to or from the golf course, you're actually exempt, which is cool for city of peers, but I was just hoping you wouldn't have to go there with people that enjoy it, you know, that are not supposed to be...
All golf carts, yes.
...permitted. They'll be permitted. Not against how we word it in our, in other words for city of peers, but I pulled up two from smaller communities in central Minnesota. One has has a golf course in it, so they exempt if you're going to it from the course. But if you're all just tooling around, then you have to follow their city ordinance, how we can fix it. But something I'll talk to Lynn and Dave about, big recommendation, sure, how we can do it. Here's the next one, they're to it, not to it, but the end of this year, because it's gonna be coming to a halt. That's something I think can address before next year. So, other than that, I have no other, nothing from you. Any questions for me?
Awesome. Well, good job, Gina. Okay. We've been moving along here, our planning and zoning people are back with us, so why don't we jump back up to the planning and zoning? First of all, let's start with the Board of Appeals meeting that took place prior to this meeting. It was recommended at the Board of Appeals that the particular variance appeal that we had, that we put it back to planning and zoning and let them come back with a recommendation to the board. And we've done that and I believe they have come back with a recommendation. Yep, you're on.
What we decided to do was save 30 feet from our little houses over there. And we had Dave and Jessica, they'll have another building permit, and, uh, 30 feet from the line. And that would be the first one. Jeremy Square asked for 30 feet also over there. The next house, obviously right to the north. And he asked for 30 feet, he's been 30 feet also. Probably set some precedent for along there. Doesn't mean someone couldn't request 32 or 33 feet or something. Couldn't do that, wanted to, sort of wanted to back a couple of feet. Still says minimum 30 feet is good if they desire, but we aren't just saying everybody's gotta be 30 feet if you go to... If they wanna go different, then they have to, so. We didn't have any issues with the student that had to... The only issue was whether it's gonna be permanent, 30 feet, everybody, all the time. And there may be cases where... Then we had some small accessory structure permits, one from our fight. Put together ordinance, they can ask for accessory structure that's temporary, and you apply for a temporary one. It was under the gun, they get it done and they let it put it up. Return the permit, I talked to a couple of us, say he wants to leave it up until Labor Day. So we approve that on condition that it's removed by Labor Day. He's gonna temporarily store some stuff in here for a house for sale.
We also put the building permit for, from hand to two weeks ago.
That's correct.
And he says plans still to go forward with building that.
That's why the location of the shed is, you know, we're in an hour, so it can still build there.
So that's, that's it. We had another small accessory structure, that's the, remember we had a couple of those called canvas type things. City sent notices that they have to get a permit two weeks ago or so. And that's Lewis Elder in Angelina Santiago, 501 Park Avenue, put one in. He said remove theirs and put up a permanent shed. But they decided it'd be about 10 by 20 feet and on pre-existing concrete slab and where the concrete slab was an old doghouse. So, we felt there wasn't enough information there. It's a little, it says about 10 by 20. If it's over 10 by 20, then the building inspector has to, then they have to have a plan and that, and so we needed more, more specific on what kind of, so we actually denied that permit.
Would that been replacing?
That would have been replacing that thing.
The other thing?
Because that's where he has it now.
Okay.
That's where he has it now, this time. Wanted to replace with that and, and he says kind of timber frame natural shed, I'm not sure what that is either. We want to be a little more careful maybe on some of those accessory structures because people can come up with some really undesirable structures.
Yeah, they, they should match the house.
The subject area we have of, we have, that's in the ordinance, I've come across that in the past. So, we need more information on that, he, he needs to be more specific. Said he wants to put a 10 feet from the back next to existing shed, which is backs up to the parking lot from high school. They may turn another new strip behind there, it'll be backed up to that, so there's no problem there, but, uh, size is an issue, needs to be specific. And usually we'd like to see what a shed kind of designed, where they're getting it, stuff like that. Concrete permit for Shane Gaul on 309 Park Avenue, that's the house that was looking pretty ratty for a while, they're really fixing it up now. And he came, I don't know, Donna, was it a week, two weeks ago, right after the last meeting?
Tuesday after our meeting.
Yeah, Tuesday after our meeting and said he wanted, he wanted to pour concrete the next day. And so he said, "Well, okay, so you're just replacing it, we're gonna approve it anyhow, you wanna go ahead and do it and have done it?" So, it looks good. Anything to improve that?
Yeah.
That, that place, that's for sure. Then we had a building permit from Ken Terrar, 618 Park Avenue Southeast, to put a sidewalk in beside his house and run behind it, a four foot by 40 foot strip. It's really beside his garage, run behind it, which is not, not an issue, it's fine. And then we had a fence permit from Cameron Voight at 302 Robert Street South. Must put a chain link fence up, basically on two sides of this property, there's a chain link fence across the back now. And then put it along the side, well, that's one side, starting at the back of the house to back to the chain link fence to the back. He said, "Three of the neighbors in the butt up to it signed," he said that. So, to the side of them, it's an empty lot, actually, it's a large lot. So we didn't have any problem with that. Along with that one also. Yes. And those are the ones that we, we have at this time. I have one other thing, papers that they brought up. So people ask about these ramps that is going to improve rights and health as long to make once in a while. We do them all around the county, I see where you present part of that. And started that back, told people in town and we have used them as temporary permits. We have temporary things, we never apply for permits. It's a product that maybe we should or shouldn't. And the question is, maybe we want to be able, if we do one in peers, should we apply for an impairment? Can we just kind of, kind of like we did the one behind City Hall here, you know, the same kind of a thing? And that's more extensive than most of them. Do you feel we should get permits for those? That's the question.
They're removable?
They're, they're always intended to be removable. There are two exceptions, of course, would be the one we did right back here, because that probably will not get removed. We made the one by the food shelf here two weeks ago.
And that's where I brought up that it's not a removable, it's, it's not a city...
It's, it's on the same building and it will probably be there indefinitely, until the food shelf's gone. Until the food shelf's gone. The other ones you make around town, most of them disappear within a year or two, because they're truly temporary, therefore, you know, to get in or out of a house, by the time people are in that shape, they're not gonna be there very long.
I would say if they were truly temporary, no, and if they're not truly temporary, then yes, would be my opinion.
We, we do have building permits for decks.
Yes. Deck, if they attach it to a house, then they're supposed to get a building permit.
That's the footing, that's everything for the deck.
Yeah, you see, see, yeah.
They're not, they're not even getting that.
Yeah, see, we don't do footings or anything under there, so if, if we would do one and you get building permit and you did it according to kosher, then you'd have to put footings down four or five feet. Basically, I'm saying it wouldn't happen.
There's almost two people. They wouldn't be doing it, they wouldn't be doing it.
Without donation.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, who paid, they pay for the wood, either the resident or often the county does or community assistance many times, or some other grant. It's pretty frequent. To have someone else build them becomes, from a $1,000 wood, it goes to a $15,000 project.
Because my biggest thing was, is if it was not built up to code and somebody fell off and got hurt, we become very liable?
Yeah, that's the question that, that came up, who would be liable? The city be liable? Would Horizon Health be liable? Horizon Health carries insurance for us as volunteers.
Maybe we table it, look into it through the lawyers to see who would be liable for something like that before we officially say yes or no.
Yeah, we can...
We do, we do make the ramps that, that pitch, that's, they're supposed to be one inch per foot, and that's why they end up so long sometimes, because if it's, you know, three steps usually you're looking at, or four steps into a house, you're looking at 30 to 40 feet, some of them go as far as 50 feet. And then with a few platforms to stop and turn, it can be pretty extensive.
And I don't know if it needs to be so much as a... Just that they're meeting the, the proper requirements? And if that's how you guys are building out to what, what the specs are, and like you said, the slope is?
The slope is, and, and I don't know where we got the pad in front, they were doing it when I moved to town, twelve years ago. Making about, all the town, it's a wheelchair, you know, running hands on the side, they're pretty cookie cutter types of things. The one that we put in over there, we made that a little stronger because of all the heat and all the stuff, carts stacked on there when we...
And what I will say, I mean, Toby's not the building inspector for town, but he inspects those, we did look at it yesterday. We did look at it yesterday, and he said, I mean, it meets, it's fine.
Oh, okay.
From that standpoint, what you guys put in meets what needs to be there. Yes.
So would it be something that they could apply for like an exception for the city to put those in, so that they would be exempt from something like that, like a building permit?
Well, I think, wait, what you hit on earlier was if it's movable.
Yeah.
If it's permanent, we should have the building. If it's movable, then, I don't know.
By our definition, we don't make, other than this one and the one at the food shelf, we have never made one that we would consider permanent.
All, all the rest are?
All are there.
Have you ever actually moved one from one house to another?
We have taken a few down, but usually, we don't go for them, and we just say, when they wanna get rid of one, they'll call sometimes, say if you find someplace to use the wood for something else, because it's hard to refurbish, it's more effort than it does to, to make a new one.
Sure.
With the pattern that we have, how we do it. I don't know of any of them that have been up for a long time in Pierce. I know there was one for quite a while, just over here, one or two, and that one we already moved up, it's not into the house. Most times, it's more an issue of they don't get to use it very long, and then they wanna stay in the house so bad, even though they probably shouldn't. In fact, we've already had it, where they left before we got done.
That's probably the liability of the homeowner. I mean, if you're putting them in, something, where'd you happen?
After it's done, and I would assume.
But they're Horizon Health, they're not working for the city.
Right.
They're volatile, right.
Maybe the, just make sure you are through Horizon Health.
Oh, and they do a background check, and they have official, Horizon Health has an official form, so you don't use voluntary program. So there's insurance for us, I assume, the liability insurance, something early, I don't know how far that goes. But once it's there, I already know.
And I guess for the city, it's like if they ever put one in for the city, would, you know, would we take the liability? That would be the question we would wanna ask, and do we need to get an additional addendum or something for it?
Well, I, I, yeah, I guess following those guidelines, I would say it makes sense that if, if we're doing a permanent one, then we follow the process of getting the building permit, and then it's there. If it's a temporary one, I wouldn't worry about it, that's kinda my thought.
So for the one that was just put on the food shelf, do we have Dave put a stamp of approval that it meets it? That it covers us? We had it inspected?
That would probably be a good idea, yeah.
That was one of the, one of the questions. There is a question, which Dave will gather and say, and Toby looked at, but he's not our official building inspector.
He, he, that doesn't hold up for.
Right.
These are eight, they're not gonna fall apart short, although the one out here has been here so long, puts some salt on it, screws are rusting up, placing signs, dumpsters, raisers will have it on the railing, but other than that, it's okay. Anyhow.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Do we want to table that issue? Do we want to make a motion on that issue?
Yeah, I mean, my motion, let me table it to make sure everything is taken care of, and then we can bring it up in our.
I don't think we have to have a motion to table it, we can just table it until, on the next meeting, put that on the agenda. So the other building permits, though, I will look for a motion to approve the building permits, with the exception of the one that was denied by Chinese zoning.
I'll make a motion to approve the building permits submitted, except for the Lewis Elder.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded by Kyle, and seconded by Lynn, to approve the building permits, with the exception of the one denied by Elder. All favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Polls? Karen unanimously.
On a side note, and maybe this is just a training thing, these people are turning these in, and it says approximately, and you're giving a range, maybe it's just training that we hand it back and say, this is not going to fly, because now you're gonna wait two more weeks.
Yeah.
Just making sure that it's complete when you're handing it in.
Also, an issue, we had a variance meeting request from Dave and Jessica Rushlow in our Board of Appeals. Recommendation by the Board of Appeals was to refund them their seventy dollars because they're in. Two hundred. Two hundred dollars, excuse me, thank you, two hundred dollars for, where did I get seventy? They're two hundred dollars for the variance permit, or variance application.
And then at that point, the city eats all the costs that it cost us to get to this point yesterday.
I make a motion to refund the permit for Justin and Dave Rushlow for the variance.
And I would base that on the fact that we did not give them the correct information. That wasn't their fault.
We should have advised them to take it back to the beginning, I think.
Right, or wrong, however that works, like I said, if it does state it in there, we, we did give them the wrong information, unfortunately, or they would have went that wrong.
Then we need to hold our staff accountable for it.
One or the other.
I think it's a learning situation at this point. Now we know going forward, it can't happen again.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not, I, I think, I think the staff was acting on the advice of our attorney.
Then it's one, two, and it calls to attorney, because all they had to do was open that book and read it.
So, motion's been made by Jackie to refund Rushlow's two hundred dollars, seconded by Lynn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lynn. All favor, please indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Polls? Karen unanimously. Okay, anything else on planning and zoning? I should show up the building permits, and take this all the way down to Bob, if you're on.
We're in the hiring process for the public health supervisor. Still in that process. We're gonna have a candidate tonight, but that's not gonna happen, so if it does happen, being called.
If casuals, we need at least, I'll.
Next meeting. Get the process, get that person going, so right now, he's kinda doing well. He's been stepping in a lot, just in the office. Kerry's obviously been stepping on the hall, he's been helping one day, he could do. Other than that, just working here, my name is.
Okay. Anything else, Bob?
I mean, going fine down at the golf course? It's actually going really well, I think. Mary's been doing a great job. Her numbers are up. Here today compared to the last ten years, quite a bit. The campaign is really good, for us this year. We did get those electric and water sites, thirty one through thirty nine, thirty eight updated. We did a fair lot of permanent camping to the drinks on that, too.
Do we have a, do we have a setup license down there? How does the alcohol work down at the golf course? Are you supposed to purchase the alcohol there, or?
You have to purchase the alcohol there if you're on the course.
On the course, but in the clubhouse? What if you're in the clubhouse? And/or?
Yep. It's all one, it's all considered one. So whether you're in the clubhouse or on the golf course, you're on that property, you can't break your own alcohol.
Or beverages, huh?
Yeah, beverages, actually, just like in a regular, that's down the street. We have basically three two licenses.
We do allow alcohol in the campground, which.
Right.
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 And we allow hard liquor brought on as well.
Do we allow hard, we allow hard alcohol?
Because, if you bring it in as a mix, because we don't have a hard liquor license.
Okay, so they allow, we allow hard liquor?
Yes.
They have to buy their pop from the clubhouse.
Okay.
And we have talked about getting a hard liquor license down there eventually. I believe we were, the conversation actually was that they may be going away from the three two licenses. I heard that from one source, and when I talked to the state about it, they did hear me such thing, so.
Maybe I'll get a strong beer license next year, instead of this, a three two, which would open up a lot more options for sales.
What?
Yeah.
That's actually what they're going with, I think it's a three two. I wanna get rid of the three two licenses. Okay, any other questions? Anything else, Bob? We have claims, bills to pay.
Any questions? There you go. I'll make a motion to pay the bills to the tune of three hundred and eighty-two thousand ninety-one dollars and nineteen cents. Motion made by Kyle to pay the bills.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jackie. All favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Polls? Tribunal, and we table the tribunal report. Anything else? Anything else tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
Jeez. Deported. Motion's been made by Jackie to adjourn, seconded by.
Sorry, Johnny, next time.
Seconded by? He doesn't even want a second, it's all seconded.
Don't be that, don't hate me.
You ruined his streak, he had a perfect streak going.
Damn. Sorry.
Wait for a second. I second. Okay, Kyle will second it. Motion being seconded during, all favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Polls? Thank you very much for coming.